Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call this city council regular meeting. It's the order, February 24, 2025. We do have a quorum here tonight. And before we move on, I'd like to say one thing. Our city manager has a birthday today. I'd like to everybody to wish.
All right. Yeah.
Anyways, I gotta know, are you 28 or 29?
Twenty-nine.
Where's the cake, Mayor?
Yes, sir. At this time, if everybody could please rise and for the pledge allegiance and invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I'll do the, oh, I'm sorry. Texas flag.
Honor to Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and invisible.
In the spirit of freedom and in the love of our common God, let us unite for the service of mankind and the betterment of this community. Let us be thankful for all that God has given us and always be mindful of the inherent worth and dignity of every person. Amen. This time, we'll move into public comments. At this time, any person with city-related business not scheduled on agenda may speak to the city council in compliance with the Texas Openshooting Act. The city council is limited to making statement of specific factual information in response to the inquiry or recite an existing policy but may not discuss, deliberate, or take any action on any item. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. The issue may be placed on a future agenda for consideration. And at this time, we don't have any public comments. So we're gonna move into item number five, the consent agenda. Number one, approval of a city council workshop, February 10, 2025, at 5:00 p.m.
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We got a motion on the floor?
Second.
And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Item number six. Items for individual consideration. Number one, resolution R.2025-11, authorizing a municipal maintenance agreement with the Texas Department of Transportation and authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement.
We have an existing agreement on the books with TechDOT, but they have asked for this agreement because we, our existing agreement is over a decade old. So this agreement outlines the city's responsibilities and TechDOT's responsibilities as it relates to the roads that TechDOT maintains. The key provisions are outlined in the narrative of the item, which you can see on your screen. Myself or Kevin will answer any questions you may have regarding this agreement.
I believe we all looked over it, and this time, if anybody would like to make a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve resolution R.2025-11 as presented.
We got a motion?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to item number two. Resolution R.2025-12, authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of El Campo and the El Campo Chamber of Commerce for the use of hotel occupancy tax funds for publicity and tourism purposes.
Yes. This is the agreement we referenced at the workshop two weeks ago. The agreement includes a number of provisions that were requested. These include the utilization of city facilities waived. They're outlined in the agreement, as well as the responsibility of the chamber to provide an annual audit and quarterly financial information. The agreement is through the end of the fiscal year but will renew. The agreement clearly states that the funds will be paid if the city council provides it in the budget, which is the expectation as we move forward. But it allows you to have room. The payments are quarterly in the amount of $13,500. This could be revisited if these payment, if hotel motel tax increases significantly or decreases as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve resolution R.2025-12, but with the deletion of item 6.5, calling for 35% of the hotel motel tax money to be spent on normal overhead expenses for the chamber.
We got a motion on the floor?
Second.
Anyone like to second that?
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
Discussion. We got a motion and a second?
I'll discuss it in that the whole agreement has to do with us making sure all the money gets spent on promotion of the city, and then we throw in something at the end saying we're gonna let them spend 35% of it on rent and whatever.
But I think that-
I'm not sure where that came from.
But that's, that's part of the operation of the Chamber of Commerce to perform the services that they, that we're requesting them to do. And I think statutorily, they're allowed to spend that amount for, of those hotel motel tax funds.
Right.
But I understand what you're saying, but this, but that's part of, if we ask them to do, like I said, the tourism or whatever, I mean, what, what, are we asking them just to allocate the funds for the banners or whatever? But this is the help with the administrative costs that go along with it.
It seems to be, to me, to be excessive in relation to everything that they are planning on spending money for. I doubt that 35% of their budget will be based on hot fund necessities. We didn't talk about that in our hearing last week.
I think we mentioned that there was this percentage of that fund would be used for administrative, general administrative. I think I would ask the question, when do the payments begin? Will we take care of quarter two, three, and four?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I was wondering, since we had the money in the budget, can we reinstate the money all the way back from the start?
You could.
We had it in a general fund, but I don't think we had it in the budget.
That's right.
But we didn't spend it.
Right. But we didn't, we didn't allocate it in the budget.
He's right. You're correct, House Member Ward. I mean, you could amend the budget, but yeah.
What this- I'd like to amend the budget, pay them all the dues that they, all the way from the start. They've earned my trust, and I think that they could probably use it.
For what?
For what they do.
Well, my point is, these are hot funds. Hot funds are putting heads on beds, and the state has very strict requirements as to what hot funds can be spent on, and it's not operating the office.
I don't, you probably didn't go to Prairie Days like I did.
I'm not, well-
There were plenty, there were plenty of people that probably stayed here for that.
The point being, I don't think it falls under state law to spend 35% of the hot funds on secretaries and office rent.
So right-
I don't believe it's legal.
Right now, we've got a motion on the floor to approve it, less the 35% at the end of the-
The 35% is in there, Mayor. It just can't be used for administrative purposes. It would have to be used directly for tourism.
Correct. Correct. So we-
Things.
I believe the motion was to approve it, but removing section 6.5.
Right.
That's correct.
So that would be amended, the document presented.
Mm-hmm.
I want to make a mo, I want to amend the motion to accept resolution R.
Twenty, 25 dash 12.
As presented.
We have to blow out this one first.
Hang on, hang on, hang on. Yeah, we, we've got a motion and a second on the floor.
But you could amend the motion in a second.
So that the more appropriate thing to do might be like this one, play out, take the vote, either let it pass or fail, and then readdress with another motion, chase it if y'all aren't wanting to pass the first one.
Yep. I've got a question before we move on. Jim brought up the fact that he don't think it's legal. I'm asking our legal attorney his opinion.
I think state law allows you to allocate up to 35% to administrative expenses.
Okay.
It's, it's a negotiating point, though, obviously, per each city. But I believe the cap is 35%. Is that right?
And I believe, and I believe that's-
Do you believe that's, or Courtney, is it 35%?
And I believe that's why it's in there, Mr. Hancock, because it is legal to, it is legal to do the 35%. So-
Okay, well, we hadn't discussed-
Of the funds they collect.
We hadn't discussed that in our last public meeting.
Yes, sir.
And so you want me to amend my motion?
If you would like, that would be fine.
Withdraw your motion?
Withdraw your motion, and then we can make a new motion. You had to withdraw the whole-
I'm not fond of withdrawing a second.
Okay.
Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, I would like to withdraw my motion and make a new motion authorizing the approval of resolution R.2025-12.
I'll still second.
We got a motion and a second on the floor? All in favor?
I got a question first.
Discussion, I'm sorry.
Can we reinstate, can we reinstate their whole things?
Legal?
Well, it's, it's not budgeted, so you'd have to-
Well, we, we have it earmarked as tourism, the entire amount, just earmarked as tourism. We haven't allocated it.
It's not, it wasn't adopted in your budget, so I think you'd have to come back first as a separate request, since that's not really on the agenda to do that.
Okay.
And have a separate request and then a budget.
We could bring it back.
Okay.
And Mr. Hodges, appreciate your concern, Councilman, and, but I believe we've got a motion and a second here. We'll get past this, and we'll go on some.
All right.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to item number three, resolution R.2025-13, authorizing professional service provider selection for engineering and administration services for the 2025 through 2030 Texas Water Development Board Flood Mitigation Assistance Program and Texas Department of Emergency Management Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Program and Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and authorizing the city manager to execute all related documents.
I could've saved you a little time on reading that, Mayor, because the revised resolution at your station has removed the hazardous mitigation grant program. Last year, you adopted a resolution that authorized GrantWorks and GMC to handle all of those for disaster-related projects. At the time, our thought was that we would secure the administrator for these grants so that we could procedurally rapid, make the process go a little smoother if there was a disaster. Unfortunately, when we were drafting this resolution, we left in the HMGP grant. But in the interest of clarification, we do not want two, two resolutions out there appointing two different firms for HMGP. So the resolution in front of you at your station pulls out the HMGP. The point of doing this, this resolution is to hire Shibe Group, who is currently working on one of your brick grants, to do a drainage master plan for Blue Creek. As a reminder, Shibe is also the county's engineer. He would use this, this, this grant, this resolution to give him the authority to look for grants, and that might be FMA, that might be another brick grant. Those funds would be used for the construction of the plans he designs in the drainage master plan. And this is on Blue Creek, and it would really give relief to District One, which badly needs it during flooding. So that's the whole point of this resolution and this action item tonight.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion?
And if you do make a motion, we need to clarify that we're pulling out the other name in adopting this resolution. There's one presented in the packet, one on the desk.
Right.
The one on the desk is the correct, but I think we ought to point out-
As presented tonight.
As presented tonight.
Yes, sir.
Make sure it's not the one in the packet.
Right.
I make a motion to approve resolution R.2025-13 as presented.
But I need, can you specify, presented tonight?
As presented tonight.
And not the one in the packet.
Not the one in the packet.
And not the one in the packet.
Sorry.
Yes.
Okay, we got a motion, second?
I'll second.
We got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
All against.
All against? Okay. Motion passes.
Six, one, yeah. I'd, I'd like to see issues someone do from, if that's okay.
Yeah, I agree.
And not against.
All right. Moving on to item number four. Discussion and consideration of issuing debt for construction of a public works facility.
Kaylee, if you will go to the item itself, please. This item is back on the agenda after the discussion two weeks ago. We didn't have a firm grip on where the council landed on that, so we've sent, met with the finance committee to discuss this. One of the, the orders of the finance committee was to, number one, look at the costs and make sure that the costs are accurate because they were provided by a Houston architect, not people who are actually performing the work. So we have met with contractors, more than one, to see what the cost would be for the, the two exhibits that you will see in here, the leaving of the, leaving the house and adding on, or tearing down the house and create, and building a new building. We also identified some costs. We have been warned that the site work might not be a cost we'll be able to, to, to save on. Some contractors may have trouble with us doing the site work, but there is potential for savings. We didn't list them all here, but these are just a summary of some savings that we could have. So tonight, what we're, we're giving you a few options, and the next item, we're gonna ask you to issue a notice of intent. And that notice of intent can go really one of three ways. You can issue the debt, one of four ways. You can issue no debt, you can issue a debt for the wastewater treatment plant, which is later, an item later on this agenda. You can issue wastewater treatment plant and tearing down the house and putting a new building. Or you can issue debt for wastewater treatment plant and keeping the house and a new building. And we'll walk you through all those scenarios in the next item. But before we get to that next item, we wanted you to have time to have additional information regarding this public works facility. If you'll scroll down, I want to show you some renderings from the architect. There were questions of what this space would look like. So there's the existing, existing building and the footprint right now. Scroll down, if you would, I'm sorry. That's the existing house. Keep going. I'll stop you when I'm ready. The existing house. Okay, so here, here's what it could look like, the footprint would look like. And, and we're just clarifying, because last time, I think there was some confusion about how, how big this was and why the costs were so high. And the reason the costs are so high is because the footprint's much bigger than just the house. So you see the house, and then the addition behind there. So that would be utilizing the house. And then the next, the next page is just a new building, if, if you were to go this way. Keep going. It's just how, how it could look and outline of what that would look like. We want you to see this. Now, tonight, you need to make the decision, do we do this public works facility now or do we wait? And that, that decision is, depends on how palatable debt is to you, to be honest with you, and what that could look like for a future tax increase. Keep going. Going. Okay, so those are, those are, that's what the house could look like with an addition, and then the next, the final slide shows you what it would look like if you were to rebuild it. So this is, this is what we're envisioning. And I will open it up for conversation. But before I do, we walked through the scenario of possibly utilizing general fund balance to support the general fund debt piece of this. Unfortunately, you can't in the utility fund, you just don't have room. We couldn't get there because you have $2 million in outstanding from Beryl, and we're waiting on those funds. And if another emergency comes, our fear was you wouldn't have the funds you needed. So we're very reluctant to advise you to use general fund balance at this time. Now, once you recover those funds, and you should be recovering those funds from FEMA, once those funds are back in, you absolutely would be well within, you could, could use those funds to support the debt if you need, if, if that was the prerogative of the council. But we also looked at potential savings within our budget, and unfortunately, there's not a lot of savings within our existing budget to get there to fund this. So if, if you're not comfortable with acting on this now, you will need to issue the notice of intent for the wastewater treatment plant. But this building right now will cost you a little over a penny on the tax rate. If you wait a few years, I imagine that number will go up. I don't think our, our, I don't think we'll be in a different, different seat in two or three fiscal years from now. I'm not advising you to issue the debt on this or not. I think that's, that has to be, depending on the, the preference of the council and what you want to do right now. Our financial advisor, James Kelly, is in the audience. He can answer questions related to debt. We're still on the topic of the facility itself, and Kira with Brayswell is he or she's our bond counsel.
I'd like to say, I'm not against the public works building.
Yeah, I know.
I'm against us seven people issuing $3 million in debt. I think that should go to the public, you know, and let the public vote on it. We bought a fire truck, $3 million, we took that to the public for a vote. So I'm not against it myself, but I just don't think it's right. I, I vow that I wouldn't raise debt unless it was an emergency, and this is not an emergency. It's a want. I know we need it, but there's a lot more things we need, more than that $3 million building. But if the public were to vote, if we take it to the public and they vote on it, I'll support it 100% because they had a say in spending their own tax money. That's just my two cents.
Any further discussion there?
I've got a couple things. I think the challenge that I have is simply, I feel like this is a half-baked project. And what I mean by that is, is you're just addressing the buildings and the offices. But I mean, 10 years ago, when I was on council before, the biggest, one of the biggest complaints was there was no parking for the equipment, the maintenance area was smaller. We're not addressing that, and that's probably another $2 million to address it. And that's where I go with this being a half-baked project. You need to have everything that you need, not a want, but a need included in this, and this is just a portion. And I think the other thing is, is that this is staff. This is the staff's decision, not ours, whether to issue the debt, it's ours, but they're the only ones that can really sit here and say definitively, we need this office space because of this, we need this parking area because of this, and this is the plan that we've come up with, and this is, we think this is the best plan, and defend that position. And then the last thing I'll say is, if we issue debt for this, we didn't learn from any of the things that we've previously gone through with issuing debt and then trying to get the project on time, built on schedule and on budget. And I think that repeating the same things that we're not learning from is a bad precedent to set.
One thing that we talked about in our last discussion was getting a rough idea of what it would cost just to refurbish the house and use the house itself for a few additional offices by getting a contractor to just walk through and give us just a rough idea of how much it would cost and how much that would be per square foot of building that we would get.
I don't think we have that yet.
Well, I can say that looking, if I may, looking through, and I did, I did look through it quite clearly there, but I can't find it this evening. So somewhere along the line, I saw a $451 a square foot number.
Two, five, something.
Yeah, it's on, it's on the cover page.
Well, even on the, even on the low side, the 451, I don't know if we have anybody in here with, on council that is looking at current construction costs, 451 will build you a mansion.
Yeah.
And, and I also want to make another comment on the existing conditions of the facility right now. If y'all would walk through that, and you have maybe, it's, it's not good.
I know.
So, so even though we were considering it as a want, it's really more than a want at this point. Now, the half-baked plan, I don't, didn't know about the fact that we needed facilities and parking for equipment and such. I also don't see anything here at all for the mechanics, mechanical side of it, and that's something that I'm not aware or privy of. So, and, and then, and then if you, if you, if you get, let's just say you did get approval to issue debt, and you're putting a, a limit of it.
Mm-hmm. A ceiling.
A ceiling. That, that's made it not palatable for us to say yes to. Why don't we, why don't, I would suggest, why don't you actually take the plans you have? And there are local construction companies that would actually give you a real number.
We have.
A real one?
Yes.
Is it what's in the, in the packet?
Yes.
$451 a square foot?
To 501, but that includes all of the earthwork, it includes all of this, it includes the sidewalks, it includes the landscaping, it includes the meter, it includes the demolition of the garage, it includes detention pond, it includes all the concrete.
And, and this wasn't done competitively, right? Just a-
No, this was just to get an estimate.
And I would think you could build a whole new city hall building, brand-new edifice for that kind of money.
I don't think so. Um, I'm-
I wouldn't argue with you, but it just doesn't seem that way to me.
Are there, are there specialties or special, I mean, when you get into hospitals, you have oxygen, and you have all the, the sanitization, everything that goes specialty stuff. Is there anything specialty in this building?
Yeah, it has, the building has to last 40 years, and it has to be commercial-grade everything, I mean, and so that, that increases the cost a little bit, and ADA compliance, obviously, on all that.
That's the big part of it, you're talking about especially because it is a public municipal building, there, there are things, and, and 450, the contracts that I talked to, they were around the 320 for the structure itself. You add in the detention pond, which we would discuss that. There's also all the drainage, and that, that's where that all comes into, including the cost of an architect to complete the project. That being said.
So you have the 6% of the architect in this, too?
I put in 10% because that's what we pay at the public safety building.
And 10% is what, they, they're no longer, they're no longer round.
Is FFE in here, too?
FFE is in there also, which, that, that's another thing that, that we would negotiate with. But then you look at the energy efficiency of the building, it has to meet certain standards per municipal building.
The commissioning and, and all of that.
The windows.
But that, that's not uncommon in a lot of-
That's true.
It's different than a home, though.
It is.
Yeah.
And I'm talking, speaking from the experience of building, buildings that come under that umbrella.
Yeah.
And that 451 just does not-
It's a lot, and we talked about that, the architect along with him, but he had mentioned that's the higher end of windows, higher end of fixtures and, and furniture, and we don't need all that. At that time, he wanted to bring it up to say there, because we, when we purchased this, it went along with the extra building that we had already purchased on the side for a parts department. Previous to that, we, we bought that building behind it, which 10 years ago, we didn't have. And that's where we house a lot of our equipment, we were able to move that over there. So we created that property to build some, to get that, so that is there. We, we've got housing for the equipment. But this, the thing we don't have is housing for our employees, our supervisors, our visitors, a place to train them that is safe and not congested. That's the only thing we don't have.
My experiences on the, when I was on the school board, we built the new middle school, we built quite a few buildings, and we paid the architect about 7%. And my experience is, they don't have any reason to save any money, because they get 7% of the project.
You're exactly right.
Exactly. And there's- I mean, the higher the project cost, the more money they're gonna make, so they have no incentive to save our-
Which, that's, there's other, there's other venues, like getting a construction manager at risk.
Which is what we would recommend.
Yeah.
And we'd say, this is all we're gonna spend.
We are gonna have to have a construction manager.
1.9 million on, on this structure.
I mean, there'd be ways that we could, we could pull in the reins on this thing, I would think.
There is a lot of room.
So I was on record last meeting stating that the 3.5 million, I think what the, what I said was, it wasn't good. And I was premature in stating that, because I didn't understand the exec, you know, scope of what was being proposed. I'm still not for a 3.5 million dollar project, but is there, so I rely on people like Tom and Kyle to look at buildings and say, you know, this is good, I'm, maybe I'm not a great numbers guy, but that's what I'm more comfortable with. And so my, my thoughts are, is how do we get the, how do we pay for this deal without increasing taxes, if at all, or maybe minor? And so, you know, if we had the $2 million from FEMA today, could we, could we write a $2 million check and finance the difference?
You could, if you had it.
If we had it.
If we had it.
Okay, let's say it comes in 18 months from now, and we go along with this project. Then what happens? Can we, can we prepay the debt?
James, that's a question for you.
Can we make a principal reduction payment? Can we reamortize the schedule? Can we do anything to save debt service going forward?
Yeah, you're talking about the-
Good evening. For the record, James Gillis with U.S. Capital Advisors. The question of can you pay off the debt early is, it's a little complicated. In the past, typically in the, in the public market, investors like to see that they're going to get some return on their, on their investment for, you know, about nine to ten years. So, if Al Campo sell bonds in the public market, an investor would offer an interest rate based on the assumption that they get a early prepayment protection, which is a call feature, for nine to ten years. The shorter the call feature, the, the higher the interest rates, generally speaking. It's possible that we could set up some type of extraordinary optional call feature. That it might cost a little bit more, so in the event that the two million dollars comes in, the city may be able to prepay the debt. There's, there's a few other ways that you might be able to pay down the principal. It may, may be a little inefficient, but there, certainly there, there are ways to do that.
What's the proposed loan structure? How, how long would it be for?
Well, I believe the twenty years has been discussed, and that's-
That's entirely in our yes.
And, and can you just give me, give me an interest rate just for discussion purposes?
Round numbers, about a little over four percent. I think conservative estimates, be about four and a quarter.
Okay, so then my next question would be is, is if we have inflexibility that way, what if we were to look at it's our own funding source through one of the local banks or go out to bid, you, obviously, your rate would be a little bit higher, but you have the flexibility to do these things.
A private placement, yes, that's, that's a possibility. There are some banks that might be willing to offer a more flexible call feature. I would say that recently, there's been a lot of volatility in the market, and the private placement market has been a little cold recently. Banks don't tend to like lending money out longer than ten, twelve, fifteen years, just because they have to hold on to it for their, for the life of the bonds, and they can't resell it.
I understand, but it also gives us the flexibility to prepay.
That's, that's right.
Reamortize, and all of a sudden, now we only have eight hundred thousand dollars outstanding, and our payment may be able to be covered by-
Yeah, and, I mean, another option would be to bank the two million. You get back and say, we're earmarking this for these payments every single year. And then that way, it's not affecting your tax rate at all. You're not, you're not, you're not designating it. You're, you're not, you're not affecting that. And there's a chance, a good chance, that we could one day refinance these. I don't know when, when that would be in the future, and we can look at, we can look at some options then, too. But you could earmark these so that you, you say, well, instead of that one cent, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take it out of fund balance for this year. I mean, that, that is something we can earmark and reserve on an annual basis to do, and you could do that through the debt service fund as well.
The most important question today, though, is, which is the plan? I don't feel comfortable, if we were to issue, agree to issue debt, but what, what's the plan? Are we building a new building or are we remodeling an old building?
Yeah, and I, I, that is, that will be a discussion that we need to have and to make a decision regarding doing that, because there are both options, and they look a little different. If you keep the house, it's cheaper. It's a half a million cheaper. If you, if you don't keep the house, then, yeah, you've got a, you've got a little bit of a bigger price tag. So, that, that will, that, if, if your, if your prerogative is to move on this now versus later.
But that's, that's my point. You're going to issue debt today for the plan tomorrow, which we haven't flushed out yet. That's my concern, is issuing the debt and running into the, what we've just run into with projects going over budget.
But you have to issue the debt before you can award the project.
You don't have to.
Constitutionally, you do.
My understanding is, is if this thing passes, we're still not obligated to take the money out and build the facility.
That's correct.
That's correct. That's correct.
In order to continue this process, to figure out what we're going to do, if you get an affirmative vote that does, if it fails, then it's done for the time being, correct? So, so one question I have then becomes is, instead of going, you know, saying this three point five and stuff, can we pick a number that we're happy with and say, hey, this is what we need? And take that to somebody and say, we need a project that's going to be this? I mean, can, that, that's a doable deal, can't we?
I'm going to answer, we're helping. I believe what I just heard Kevin say earlier is that they consider the C M A R.
Yes.
Construction Manager at Risk. That's, that's what happens when you bring a, a company in that is a C M at risk, is you have a budget.
Yes.
And you control a lot between the, the owner and the architect, saying, no, you can't do this and stay in this budget. Because we know we have, or they know, they have their ear to the ground, and they know that this is going to exceed the budget and come up with a plan. It's, it's, it's not uncommon at all that someone that comes in with a P O R, it's a program of requirements, we need this, and they come in with a budget, we have this. And, and, and so now, for the next six months, between the C M and the architect, they'll take those two things, the program of requirements and the, and the budget, and they'll come up with the design and say, this is what I think we can build this for. Now, granted, that doesn't help us here this evening, like, what is the plan? What is the building? But you, like, that's an answer to your question.
Correct, no, that, and that's-
Based on, based on what we're trying to do, it seems like, based on the, the ranges that we've been given, you can, you can build this thing for two and a half million. And if that's the case, you give it to them, like you're saying, Tom, for two and a half million. Say, I want to build them for two and a half million. Try to make it about like this, with the remodel and this, and we'll cut whatever we have to cut to meet that and see what the debt service makes.
Yes.
But why, but why do that? If you know you need something, and it's got to be for forty years, why do we not do it correctly the first time? Why are we going to try to do something to fit a budget? If we know, I mean, you, Kevin said it, that building's got to last forty years, correct? That building's already almost a hundred years old, so now you're wanting to add another forty years on to it. So, that's what I'm saying. Why do we?
Well, probably, probably the best thing to do is, you know, my personal opinion, I think the building needs to come down. We need to start from scratch because there's a lot of things there that are not going to work. Anyways.
But in order to-
I think, I think we need to, I, I think we need to come up with a number and say, look, this is what we need to work with. This is what we got. And I think if, if that's what we want to do, that's what we'll do.
I, I'll go on record and state that I'm not, I am for looking into this and, and progressing this further, but I'm not a guaranteed yes for the next step.
Right.
But in order for us to vet it out further, we would need to approve this so that we could further vet it out, right?
What's our timeframe? If, if, if it, if it passes, then, then do we have a time limit?
The sale is in May, and you would need to know that pretty far in advance if we were going to lower that ceiling. Is that right?
I, I will, I'm, I'm sorry, I will have the resolution.
It's a rush because we don't want to pay issuance cost twice.
What's the issuance cost?
Because they're six figures.
Yeah.
So, I can speak a little on this.
Sorry, thanks, Kira.
Record, this is Kira Link with Bracewell. So, the actual bond issuance process is about ninety days. So, from the notice of intent to the bond sale will be about ninety days. So, that informs your decision.
I'd like to comment on basically saying the same thing I said before. I think we need to fix our sewer system.
Yeah, agreed.
I think we also need to do an intense study to find out what other utility emergencies we might be confronted with in the next few years, because we've had a lot of them in the last few years. And I would like to see us sort through all of that before we try to go forward issuing more bonded indebtedness to build something we would very much like to have, but we would also very much like to have a working sewer system and water system that we aren't going to have any more half million dollar emergencies on.
One more question. How, how much would the savings be if, if we were to push both of these through at the same time? What's the, what's the difference?
The issuance cost, it's, there's just some redundancies, the, for example, of rating. I'd say it's in the order of, I don't know, offhand.
We said six figures. Maybe you've got forty thousand, but sometimes those, it would depend on how, the size of the issuance, wouldn't it?
That's right.
What's the difference in cost between an issuance and a private placement, roughly? What do you save? But if you split this in half and did the one point five COs and did the private placement for the public works, what, what do you save there?
Typically, there's some savings, depending on the size of the issuance, it may be a fifteen to twenty thousand dollar bond rating fee. However, the, in a private placement market, typically, the interest rates are going to be a lot higher than with the comparable public market offering. And so, that's why in a situation like this, we normally would recommend that the city go with a strong bond rating going to the public market, but of course, there's extenuating service.
Yeah, and we would still utilize financial advisor and bond counsel if we were to do a private placement to protect the interest of the city.
Counsel, why y'all would be against taking this to the voters, letting the voters have a say on this?
I'm fine with it.
I mean, if we want to build something right and build it like, like Kevin's asked for, I don't think our seven people should be spending three million dollars of taxpayer money. I think it should go to the voters.
The comment I would have behind that is that we were all elected to make these decisions, and, and, you know, I, I can understand, three million seems like a big dollar generally, but on the scope of the city and what it costs to build property, I'm okay with trying to handle it in-house. I'm fine with going to the voters if that's what it is, but I also understand us having to make the decisions on behalf of our constituents.
I will say this, Mr. Hodges, Councilman Hodges, if we're confused about what we're getting for three million dollars, how confused is the voter going to be?
Well, you wouldn't be taking it till next May, so you'd have a lot of times to flush that out.
Time to educate them.
You, you would, but a concern might be that under the legislative session right now, they're looking at, there's bills on the floor to require that you have a three, three-quarters vote, and that they freeze, if, if it failed and you want to take it back, you would have to wait three to five years. That bill hasn't passed yet, but it's out there, and so be mindful of that because that, that could potentially adversely affect you. I mean, if they're saying no, the answer's no, but I just want to let you know that that's out there.
What's, what's the difference in the, in the amount of debt that we're going to, I guess, take on if we just do the wastewater treatment plant?
Yeah.
We don't do the other, it, it didn't seem like that much difference to me when I was looking at it, if you just roll it all together.
We would be rolling it together.
I know, but I mean, if you didn't roll it together, how much are you saving?
We would require-
Would you, would it require any increase at all?
Not in taxes.
Okay, okay.
There would be no tax increase.
No tax.
If you only go with option A, which is the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
And this four and a half percent interest, is that a tax-free municipal bond?
Yes, sir.
And I'm sorry, can you restate what the savings is? If, if, if we had to bring this back, just the, just the building at some other point, how much is that, would that cost in the, in the bond fees versus what we would be saving now that we're combining them?
I, I would say it's probably in the range of, I don't know, forty thousand dollars. That's, that's offhand.
Forty is well within the realm of the cost of doing business.
Does that include the S and P call?
Yeah, I, no, it would not. I suppose that would be, the rating fee may be, again, in the range of fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, so.
Fifty-six thousand dollars.
So, we did just the wastewater treatment plant. You wouldn't have to issue debt?
No, I still have to issue debt to pay for it unless the council chooses not to do that.
But if you rolled them both together?
You would have one issuance fee rather than two if you were to go back.
And you would be saving, that, that's the savings that you were talking about.
Yeah, it's, it's-
Well, and the difference is, is the, any changes in the, in the project delay, right?
Correct.
In the inflation and other things that go on with construction projects, right?
If we did the wastewater plant and the public works building, it's going to be more than three million dollars.
Yeah, it is, and your NOI spell them out in the next item, how much the costs are. When we say the three point five, we're just talking about the public works facility. You add them together, yes. Yes, sir.
So, why would there only be a penny increase if we do?
Because your, your wastewater treatment plant is using self-supported funds. That's your utility rate funds. And this building will be half paid for using self-supporting funds, utility rates, and half paid for. It's, it's half general fund because you've got your streets and your parks department in there, and then you have your utilities. And so, we split it roughly, roughly in half. There's a little bit of a difference on that. I think it was in half. Was it in half?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, then I'll restate my, my position, that I'm still okay with moving forward, but knowing that the cost of doing business, if we don't do this, is only forty to sixty thousand, I'm willing to absorb that to make a decision that's not rushed.
Okay. When do you want us to bring it back if this is the prerogative of the council?
Well, I think we start again, trying to fit, I mean, maybe you make it by May, but if you don't make it by May, and to Mr. Hodges' point, I mean, maybe this thing gets to the point where we start adding in these other things that, you know, Councilman Ward has added, to where the price looks like, oh, maybe we do have to take it to the voters.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, two and a half million bucks to me, it's, again, it's a lot of money. I, I'm okay with voting on it one way or the other, but if it gets higher than that, then I, I do think it may be something that has to be.
And by the time we get around to doing this, there may be other projects we need to add on to it also.
We definitely need to do this.
Do we, do we need this worse than streets?
We need the water and sewer. We need that for sure.
For sure.
Well, I think you're already spending money on water and sewer.
Yes.
There's a lot of projects already on the books for that.
Yes, there are.
And there's certain funds that are associated with that.
That's right, and you-
So, we're making headway.
You can't, yeah, you can't use general fund.
I understand there's some emergencies that are out there. That's fair, but, you know.
That's why you have fund balance.
Right, exactly.
And that's why we're not recommending using fund balance for, to support this debt. Instead, we're recommending issuing debt.
Okay, we go on and vote to approve?
I was just fixing to say that.
A lot of expense on our utility system.
Go ahead and move to the next item.
I would say, yeah, because the next item is really where you're going to pick item, option A, B, or C, so that's really the meat of the conversation. So, I don't think there's any action to take on this item. This was just-
Lot of discussion.
A lot of discussion.
Lots of discussion.
So, I think we're, we're all ready to move on to the next.
We'll move on to the next item.
Okay, next item. There. Oops, sorry, she doesn't, she's about, she's about to have it.
Moving on to Resolution R 2025-14, which is authorizing public publication of notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation, authorizing the preparation of a preliminary official statement and notice of sale and approving other matters incidental.
Yes, this is where it gets complicated. You have three versions of the NOI in your packet, and for lack of a better way to do this, Kayla, we have them as option A, option B, option C. I, I guess you can make the motion that way, just for, for the sake of avoiding confusion, but I will walk you through those options. Option A, option A allows you to issue debt, would permit you to issue debt for just the treatment plant, and that amount-
How much would that be?
One million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, and that includes all your debt issuance costs.
And that, and that repayment can be absorbed?
No, this is only wastewater, this is only utility debt, so will not be absorbed through FEMA reimbursement.
But it's paid, but it's, but, but we can cover that through utility fees and through the utility-
Correct, yes, yes. Without an increase in tax. Option A, no increase in tax. Option B, option B allows you to keep the house and add on to it, do an expansion, and do the wastewater treatment plant. It's in the amount of four million, one hundred and eighty-five thousand. Option C, okay, option B is also a tax increase as well as a utility increase. Option C is the new building and the wastewater treatment plant, demolition of the house, four million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand.
Mayor, I make a motion, we approve option A.
No, I have option A, B, and C. Those are the three options.
I didn't hear two C.
C is the new building.
New building.
Four million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, and that, that's, that doesn't include the interest. That's the principal amount.
Just to avoid any confusion between the options, whichever one you choose to make a motion on, please state the amount, okay? You can call it option A, B, or C. It doesn't matter, but please state the amount of what you are authorizing debt for.
You'll have to restate it.
Mr. Hodges, for your motion, please state the amount of debt for option A, which is-
You're going to have to put it up there. I can't see.
Yes, it's one million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand.
One million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars for option A.
Okay, thank you.
For the water and sewer plant.
Yes, sir.
We got a motion on floor. Anybody like second that?
Second.
Got a motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, go ahead.
I do have a question. So, if we vote for option A, exhibit A, all the other options are off the table?
Yes, sir, we would bring it back to you to, to discuss later.
Okay.
Now, we voted for an issue on some bonds.
Yes, sir.
For how many years? This says forty years.
Twenty years. I shouldn't-
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed forty- Not to exceed 40, but it will be 20 years. Yeah, we, we have it, that's the, the standard language that appears in all of our issuances.
So here's a question, if this fails, what does that do with the, do we, do, what happens to the wastewater treatment plant?
Well, you've got it as the next item. I, I think you'll have to reject the bids and we'll have to find a way to either not do the project or find a different way to pay for those, for that project.
Well, I'd like to, like, you, you're still going to say something there?
No, I'm just trying to understand the implications of that because again, I'm for moving forward with the project and reviewing it, knowing that it doesn't have to happen. This is a more limiting motion on the floor?
Yes.
So if, 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 if it currently fails, again, can you tell me again what happens with, we still have?
You could make another motion to pass the other options, correct, Kaylee?
You, you could because the only.
B or C, yeah.
Right. Which would be the combined COs.
Or, or bonds, pardon.
Bonds.
Bonds. So if.
But, but I, and I'm anticipating what you're thinking, I'm sorry if I'm wrong, but I don't think it limits you from, if you pass this tonight, this one, A, you go forward with the wastewater, uh, issuance, you still can come back and revisit the public works building.
Absolutely. It's not dead in the water.
We're not turning that down.
It just wouldn't be part of this issuance.
But if, but if this, what if this option A vote fails?
Well, then you're going to find another way to finance the wastewater.
Or not do them.
Or not do them, which, I don't.
Yeah, but a wastewater plant.
I, I'm just, I'm asking for guidance here.
Sure, and thank you.
I'm, I'm, I'm for the 1685. I'm also for looking into the other things. I don't want to vote, I don't want to kill, the wastewater plant has to get done.
Right.
I, I don't want the public works thing to then kill me voting for the wastewater thing either. I'm in the same boat as you.
Yes, and we're, we're, I think we're all in that same boat.
Yeah.
We want to make sure that we're going to be able to come and revisit the public works department, uh, public works facility, correct?
That is correct. That's, that's why it was presented to you this way with the wastewater only, and then the other had the combination of both together, so that you can still come back and reconsider the public works building as an individual, uh, bond issuance later on.
But if, but by doing that, then we eat the, the 40 to 60,000.
Yes, we're going to have two issuance costs, that's right.
It wouldn't be at the same time, it would be a different time.
It would be at a different time.
Right, right. So right now, we got a motion on floor about Councilman Hodges.
We, we would have to do that, I'm sorry. We, we would have to do that in a short order though, right? Like, we're talking within a couple of months here or less, or not even?
The second bond issuance can be anytime.
You could do, you would do just.
If you wanted to keep on this timeline and combine them.
You could chase it right after, right? If they wanted to come back in a month or two, James?
Okay. All right, thank, thank you, sorry to.
Thank you, Paul, counsel.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor for the approval of the wastewater treatment plant.
Yep.
In a, in a second?
Yep.
We had discussion, all in favor? Raise your right hand. Motion passes to move forward with the wastewater treatment plant?
Thank you both.
Oh, I'm sorry, we got one opposed.
Thank you both. Okay.
And then we'll be back with, uh.
We'll bring the public works building back.
Yeah, mayor, I don't know if there's a caveat here, but I, I would ask that we bring it back.
We will bring it back.
Because I think it's worth it, to have this conversation.
Very worth.
And I'm glad to get the numbers, you know, because we can talk numbers that are hypothetical, but, you know, hearing stuff, 40 to 60,000, again, I, that's well within the cost of doing business for the size of the city.
That's right, I, I agree.
All right, moving on. Uh, item. Thank you all, thank you all very much. Moving on to Resolution R 2025-15, awarding bid for construction of wastewater treatment plant, improvements to BSI Water Resources, Inc., for $1,595,000 and authorizing the city manager or designee, uh, to execute all related documents.
Thanks, Mark. I bet you are butting your nails on that last item to make sure Mark Ruhl's here with our, with Strand Engineer, Associates, our engineer. Uh, this project was bid out in January and, uh, BCI was kind enough to extend, uh, the bid long enough for us to make this decision. You just authorized the NOI, uh, which is additional, uh, funding of this, which allows us to proceed. We needed that commitment before we could bring this bid back to you, because you have to have the funding statutorily to be able to issue the bid. And so that is why you see us issue, do the debt in the manner which we do. So we know that the project costs 1.59, uh, we know how much you need, and now we have the debt to issue it. We ask you to award this to BCI Water Resources Group. Interestingly enough, we had four bids on this one. We were happy to see that and they were quite lower than we expected them to be. And that was because we waited to issue the bids because of what happened last fall. And so that's why you, you see them come down just a little bit.
Let me make sure I understood what you said. You have to issue the debt before you can go out for bid?
Yes.
Before you award a bid.
Before you award a bid.
Not issue a bid, right?
Not issue, award a bid, that's right.
What did Jonathan say this morning?
Because you've already, we've already gone out for bids.
Yeah, but you have the, you have the commitment on the NOI. No, it's okay.
What's the NOI?
The notice of intent. You're committing to.
Right, we've already gone out for bids for this, that.
It's just before you award.
I understand that, but what was just said was, we, we have to issue debt.
In most, in most.
To go out for bids.
Ronnie, this, this is correct. In most, and we heard this last week with our engineers, most bidders do not want to bid a project that is not funded.
Well, that's true.
They will, they will not participate in bidding.
We're lost here. We've, we've already, then, it's contradictory is what's being said.
Well, un, I.
I think you, I think what you're saying is you can still bid it, it's just not the preferred method because you're not going to get a lot of bidders that are going to waste their time if you don't have the debt issuance.
Okay, that's fair.
But you can't award the bid until you actually have authorized the debt.
Right. And you only have typically 30 days, you typically have 30 days to issue the award of the, uh, the bid. Not all bidders are kind enough to extend that because of price volatility.
So now we just awarded the bid?
You need to award the bid, or, or not award the bid and reject it.
Yep, so Resolution R 2025-15, um, do we got a motion on the floor?
No.
No, we do not.
Mr. Mayor, I, I move that, uh, we approve Resolution R 2025-15, awarding the bid for construction wastewater treatment plant to BCI Water Resources in the amount of 1,595,000, that's it.
We got a motion, second? Anybody like to second that? We got a motion, a second on the floor? Any discussion?
I have a question.
Sure.
So we're looking at about, let's see here, 300,000 between the low bidder and the next, Brown and Root. That's, I'm sure that was scrutinized carefully and make sure that everything was in there. It's, okay. That's all, thank you.
Is this a fixed price, not to exceed?
Not to exceed.
All right, we got a motion, a second. We had some discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mark. Safe travels back.
Item number seven, this meeting is adjourned.